I call the meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the March 3, 2025 study session of your Ashland City Council. This evening, we have three agenda items. The ADU pre-approved plan program update, the fire update, which will address single role program, the FEMA grant, and paid leave overtime impacts, and then the revision to AMC 9.04 weeds and noxious vegetation. We have one person who has signed up to speak during public forum, so we will do that first. Paul Mozina, please come to the standing mic on that side.
I have to ask for the fire issue.
So it's not an EMS review? So you want to talk during the single role?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I'm the one down.
Okay. All right, great, thank you. So we will move on then to the first agenda item, the ADU pre-approved plan program update. Brandon.
Thank you, Mayor Graham, Council, Brandon Goldman, Community Development Director. So I'm pleased to come to you this evening with a program that the city council initiated during their last goal setting as one of the items for the Community Development Department. It was also brought forth by a Development Process Management Advisory Committee as one way to streamline the development process for Ashland residents that were specifically interested in adding a second dwelling to their property. So to start with definitions, an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit, is a second unit alongside a single-family property. It's accessory to that primary use. We often have seen them referred to as mother-in-law quarters or granny flats. So they serve a variety of purposes. You know, in most sense, they are those self-contained housing units that have their separate entrance, their own kitchen. They can be used as rental properties, and I'll say full-time rental properties, and I'll get to that in a moment, but they are permitted outright within all residential zones within the city without a planning action process. And they do have the benefit of providing needed housing ultimately, whether it's somebody that's looking at accommodating housing for a family member, or looking at the opportunity to rent it to a college student, or another resident of Ashland, or whether they're looking at moving it into themselves and then renting out their main house. So in this sense, it does function as really providing a greater variety of housing types within Ashland. And so the purpose of promoting them is really to increase that diversity of housing supply, generate rental income for the homeowner, promote sustainable and efficient land use. In that sense, we're utilizing an existing property to accommodate two households off of the same streets, same sewer lines, electric lines. It has some benefits in terms of not having to extend services and new roads to service an increasing population base. It also really enhances opportunities for community stability and inclusivity, and by that, it really rests on the concept that people that live in Ashland are more community-engaged. And as such, if people that work in Ashland can live in Ashland, they're not commuting from another community. So these are reasons that ADUs are supported. We've been fortunate to have a strong history of ADUs being developed in Ashland. But nonetheless, the idea of creating free plans that are readily available for our property owners within the city, our hope is that will incentivize people to seriously take a look at whether they can accommodate a second unit on their property without incurring the costs of hiring an architect to do custom design plans, only to find out that when going through the full process of where it can be located on the site, how much it will cost to extend utilities to it, insurance, tax implications, all of those things, to find out only after those expenses that it can't be done. So what we want to do is establish this program to provide a free consultation with the planning department. If anybody's interested in doing accessory dwelling units, they should contact planning@ashland.org.us or come into our office, and we'll schedule a meeting with the planner, pull up a site plan of their property, and walk through the process in terms of where they could locate it on their property. I would note that the plans that are all provided in here are all standalone plans. Converting a portion of your house may be a more cost-effective way to do an accessory dwelling unit, because you already have the roof and the walls, but that's a customized plan, and each house has so many variables that we can't produce a set plan for conversion of a garage, for instance, although that is commonly done in Ashland. I should note that we should recognize the contributors to this project, namely, the city of Ashland reached out to a number of other cities, city of Medford, city of Eugene, both provided ready-made plans that we are using in our program. We also had local architects and designers, Derek Sherrill and Carlos Delgado, who provided plans. I also wanted to acknowledge former city planner Jennifer Chenoweth, who worked on this project before she left the city employment, but wanted to give her recognition for the effort. I also wanted to note that the plans provided in this are not the end product. We anticipate other plans becoming available for inclusion in the free plan submittal. Specifically, the Building Codes Division of the state of Oregon has recognized that having free plans may accelerate that development of ADUs, and so they have on their 2025 plan to develop free plans that would then be freely available, and we'd incorporate those into our program, because they, again, would have already gone through the gauntlet of getting building permit approval and ready for issuance. So with that, I also wanted to note that in addition to just providing free plans, we felt it was important to really provide people a how-to guide to walk through the steps that they need to take in order to succeed in putting an accessory dwelling unit on their property, namely, the assessment of the property, looking at the zoning, the setbacks, what infrastructure is already in place, what physical constraints, whether it's steep slopes, or large statured trees, or flood plains, are on the property. And I think that the planning consultation will be very useful as a value for somebody to come in and get that information for their specific property. They can still pull up information on their own and determine that, and hopefully, the guide gives them some guidance in that sense. Also, defining the goals of the accessory dwelling unit, you know, is it to create rental housing? Is it to create family housing? Is it to allow you to age in place? These are all different objectives and would have different ramifications on what kind of housing unit you planned on producing. Choosing a design, whether it's a pre-approved plan, or whether a customized plan is most beneficial for the homeowner, is something that is a step that everybody needs to take. It's often the first step that people take, what's the design of the house that I want, before going through these other steps. And probably one of the more important steps to look at at the front end is budgeting and financing. What's it going to cost to build it, both in terms of construction costs, and we all know that those adjust all the time. So looking at how much somebody that built their accessory dwelling unit in 2021, how much it costs them, the cost today may be markedly different, in some cases lower, in some cases higher. So really trying to provide people that they can get estimates from contractors early on, so that they know what those costs will be. And then the financing side of things, I think many prospective ADU builders don't consider other aspects like the implications on their property taxes, the costs of insurance, and how that might change. So those are ancillary financing costs that they should factor into the project per forma, or the budget of an ADU at the front end. You know, the city can't give them financial advice in terms of lending, but we can say that you should probably talk to a lender, and they're usually able to talk to them early in the process about how much they're qualified for. You know, if they're self-financing with savings, again, they might not be thinking of those long-term costs if they're just building it as a guesthouse for their friends and family to visit, they might not be considering the implications on their taxes or insurance. So good things to think of upfront. And we also wanted to talk about coordination of utilities, working with contractors, and submitting for building permit process. That's a black box for many people, so to the degree that we can outline what it takes to go through a building permit process, obviously, the freely available plans have already gone through our building department and are all stamped for approval under the current building code. And so if there's no alterations to those, they'll fly right through our building department. But people should also be aware that throughout the building process, there's inspections, requirements, and to step through those processes. So I did want to note that, for anybody listening at home, construction costs on accessory dwelling units can vary wildly, you know, from $150 a square foot for conversion of existing floor space to 500 square feet per square foot or more for new construction. And that all depends on complexity and the type of unit. Unfortunately, the smaller the unit you build, the higher the per-square-foot cost, because you're amortizing a kitchen and a bathroom, or across a smaller floor area, and those are the more expensive components of a house. So really giving people that kind of information, also outlining the systems development charges that are charged for the impact fees on city systems, be that transportation, the impact of an individual household on the park system, water, or sewer system, all of those SDCs are collected. To note for council, if these plans are selected, most of these are less than 500 square feet in size, and so they're automatically allowable for a 50% reduction in the systems development charges that would otherwise be collected at issuance for buildings that are over 800 square feet in size. And I would also note that we're a property owner interested in providing affordable housing, indeed restricting that unit to be affordable for a 30-year period, we would waive all the SDCs. It's not a significant financial incentive to deed-restrict a property for that, but again, it is a possibility. The value of the plans that we're providing, again, in terms of that budgeting, if you look online, you can find pre-canned plans between $500 and $2,000. Usually, they all have add-ons if you want foundation details, or other kind of details provided that the building department will require. But nonetheless, I think the monetary value of the plans is important, but it may not be as valuable as really allowing people to conceptualize putting a unit on their property and getting some assistance to make that happen. And so we also note that there may be local or state programs that allow for energy efficiency improvements and incentives on that. There's also an important step in terms of recognizing the fire-wise, or essentially the ignition-resistant vegetation around a property. A new accessory dwelling unit would have to comply with the standards the city of Ashland's already adopted for a wildfire overlay. So again, giving people an opportunity to come in and get that information early in the design process really is imperative, so that they haven't had a new landscape plan developed that was not in consideration of those impacts. Some of the accessory dwelling units would also be in historic districts, and so I mentioned the planning consultation. The Historic Preservation Advisory Committee also offers every Thursday an opportunity for people to come into our office, even with a concept, and say, I'm looking at building an addition to my home, or in this case, an ADU, and what kind of things should I anticipate for making it historically compatible with the primary home on the site, or the neighborhood in general? So although that is not binding for accessory dwelling units, they're not required to go through a site review, or planning process, or approval by the, or recommendation from the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, it's a great resource for people to take advantage of, because subtle changes at the front end may not cost a lot, but really does factor into compatibility with the neighborhood for things like what siding choice, or what window trim choice is made. And in terms of regulations, this program doesn't come with any new regulations, some that are related to accessory dwelling units that already apply throughout Ashland, is that in single-family zones, we don't currently permit any travelers' accommodations. And so that prohibition would apply to accessory dwelling units in single-family neighborhoods as well. And so I bring that up, because one factor that the city of Medford took in offering free plans is people had to sign an agreement that they would not use their accessory dwelling unit as a travelers' accommodation for a set period, and I think that was 10 years. But again, in Ashland, that's already the standard. There would be the potential in multifamily zones for someone to build a second dwelling unit and apply for a conditional use permit to convert that into a travelers' accommodation, but again, that's not a change in the existing land use zoning that can be done right now in any multifamily zone. And I mentioned before, it can be built without a planning action, just a building permit. If it's a customized plan, building code, and planning department will make sure that it meets all the setback requirements, how close you can put that building to your neighbor's property line, or your own property line, maximum height, make sure that it doesn't cast a shadow on the neighbor's property greater than the solar ordinance would allow. And so even those standards would apply for these pre-canned accessory dwelling unit But again, at that pre-meeting with the planning department, we should be able to work that all out, so when they submit their plan, it's located on the site that complies with all those standards. And typically, an accessory dwelling unit would be approved through our building department within less than a week, and at that point, they're breaking ground and beginning construction. So with that, if council had any questions about this program?
Are there questions? Raise your hand if you'd like a question. Okay, we'll start with Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Brandon. I really don't have a question, just to say that when this popped on to my radar, maybe four years ago, that this was coming to fruition, it seemed like a radical idea. Now that it's here, and it's fully baked, and it's offered to Ashlanders, it just seems to fit so well into our ethos, and I'm really excited about the opportunity for Ashlanders. So thank you for all your hard work on this. My best friend lives in the Sherrill unit, and it's super cute, and it's in a neighborhood of other ADUs, and it's just great to see them pop up. So thank you for the great presentation, and I wish I had a challenging question for you, but I'm not going to make one up. Thank you.
Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Brandon. I appreciate the handout you gave and the slide that was in the packet, and I too am excited about ADUs. And something that you touched on is for anyone who is doing this and in the process of doing this, as you know, I was approached by a constituent asking about Senate Bill 919, and I was hoping that you can elaborate on that and how it affects the ADUs in Ashland.
Sure. For the rest of the council's edification, Senate Bill 919 was passed in 2023 by the Oregon Legislature, and it allows an opt-in for communities to provide a five-year tax abatement for accessory dwelling units that are occupied by the property owner that built it. And so it is, as an opt-in, the city of Ashland has not implemented that section of Senate Bill 919, which would actually require not just the city council to make that determination to abate taxes, but reach out to the other taxing districts on our property tax bill in order to ensure that at least 51% of the taxing districts were in favor. And so that essentially means Jackson County and the school district and the city of Ashland seeing as providing a tax abatement for market-rate accessory dwelling units, something that is within the interest of the city and the school district and Jackson County. So again, that would have to be a legislative proposal from council. It's not something that is currently on our work plan to initiate. I do recognize that the increase in property taxes for a property owner building an ADU that is not looking at getting rental income off of that property is something that they need to factor in. If they were getting rental income off of that property, obviously, that changes how much the rent would be in order to compensate for those additional taxes. So if you had any specifics on that, but that's a...
And I appreciate the general description of that, so that not only that individual wanting to build the ADU could know the depth of Senate Bill 919, because I believe there needed to be clarity around that for anyone who's thinking of it or doing it. It's not in our hands, it's Jackson County.
Yeah, and it's not been adopted by the city of Ashland, so it's currently not an option for a property owner in Ashland to look at tax exemption. So I would look at directing those people to talk to the accessories department to get an idea of how much their property taxes might increase with that investment in their property.
We need to expand our tax base. Thank you, Brandon.
Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a few questions, but I'll just start with one. So Brandon, thank you. This is awesome. Like Counselor Hanson said, this is just fantastic. I appreciate the work on you and the staff and our partners out there. This is right up what we were looking for, so very, very cool. So because I know you like to be put on the spot, it's your favorite, completely totally unofficial number relative to your history, you know, one or two sets of plans that come across your desk over the years. Percentage-wise, costs, we're not even talking about, square footage isn't even a way to think about costs for the most part anymore, but what would you say to the people thinking about this? You talked to developers and others, really, it's the cost of time. What kind of percentage decrease in time would you say, just as you think about that from a comm dev and a planning standpoint, it would save folks relative?
Yeah, I mean, that might be hard for me to assess, because that is time that...
That's why I put you on the spot.
Yeah, it doesn't really come across our desk. When the plans come into our office, they've already spent countless hours with their designer or architect to design plans and come before us. They may then, at that point, find that it doesn't comply with building code and have to do revisions, you know, so I think it would just be highly variable. It could be saving somebody that has a set of plans that meet all building code and are situated perfectly on the lot, come in and get a building permit. They may have worked with a designer or a consultant to locate where it fits on their property, a surveyor, and spent, you know, 30, 40 hours of time, not to mention the hundreds of hours of sleepless nights thinking about what they want to do, but, you know, that isn't something that we'd ever see.
Right.
We do see, with, you know, some frequency, people that come into the front counter with a fully designed plan situated on a property, that they sent their plan off to somebody far away who threw it onto their plan, it's only three feet from the property line, submitted to our department, and we say, well, you need a six-foot setback from the property line, and now they have to send it back for redesign. So that does happen with some frequency. I think that in those cases, this would, again, save people that iterative process of going back to their designer, getting a no from the city, going back and making revisions, getting a no from the city because it is, you know, now it's too close to the building, so there's a separation between buildings. So hopefully, that consultation, even though it's a 30-minute consultation, my hope that that might save people countless hours in terms of a back and forth with a designer that's not familiar with Ashland's land use code.
Thank you.
Counselor Kappen?
Thanks, Brandon. And I had the benefit of participating in the conversation last week at the Housing and Human Services Committee, so I don't have a whole lot of extra questions, other than just to really congratulate you and your team for putting this together. I think it's really far-reaching, far-thinking, and actually, it's been thought far back, because we've had an ADU program, or we've had an ADU code that's, we've got a building code, or planning code that's allowed ADUs for over 20, 25 years, from what I understand. And we've got over 300 of them around town. That was a piece of information that you shared with me some time back, which is pretty amazing. And I saw that firsthand when I was knocking on doors campaigning a couple of years ago. It's really quite extraordinary how many ADUs there are all around town in places you wouldn't necessarily expect. And as you said with your comment that the cost per square foot can vary widely, the conditions can really vary widely as well. There are some that are, you know, these plans, of course, all look beautiful. Some of the ADUs that are actually on the ground are maybe not quite so beautiful, and maybe haven't been done with quite as much care, or have deteriorated over 25 years or something. So I think there's also a challenge there for our residents as well, is how to upgrade and renovate ADUs that might, that could stand that. I really appreciate what goes into this with the free consultation and advice, because it isn't just, you know, go out and talk to an architect, talk to a builder, and build it. I think there's a real added value from the county, from the city team that's doing it, so I appreciate that. And I would also point that there are a lot of others who are working on this, the ADU guy, I think his name, he calls himself, Derek Sherrill, who was one of these, came and talked to a Housing and Human Services Committee meeting last spring, and really has an interesting way of identifying what could be an ADU, even an existing building footprint, for example. People talk about garages or other things, but there can be a master bedroom that can be turned into an ADU fairly easily in some cases. So really looking at it with fresh pair of eyes. So that does bring up my question. My question is, in those kinds of cases, if it's an ADU that's in the existing building footprint, how do we think about something like system development charges in that context, when you're actually reducing the footprint of the, that's not ADU, and then adding to the ADU? So should we really be charging entire system development charges for that 500 or 800?
Yeah, we are not on some of the systems development charges. The methodology that's been adopted, for instance, for water and sewer SDCs relate to habitable square footage. And so if you have, I'm just going to use round numbers, you have a 2,000-square-foot house, and it's all habitable square footage, and a 500-square-foot garage, which is not habitable square footage, if you came in to convert a portion of the existing heated floor area into an ADU, a 500-square-foot ADU, you would not be charged water or sewer SDCs, because those are based on square footage of habitable area. You would be charged on the transportation impact fee for an additional dwelling, because it's an additional household, and you'd be charged the parks SDC, which I think is $814, but again, reduced by 50% if it's for a small unit, for an additional household. Those fees are based on number of households. So again, that's a policy decision for the council in review of SDC methodology, as to whether the methodology could factor out accessory dwelling units in their entirety that are within the footprint of an existing house. The reason I brought up the garage example is that is not heated space, and so it never paid SDCs based on the per-square-foot for habitable floor area, and it would be newly charged, the water and sewer as part of that conversion.
Do you have a follow-up on that?
Yes.
So the SDC, I know that the SDC, there was an SDC committee a few years ago that reviewed, I don't know, and I should try to dig it out at some point, maybe you can send me a link, because I was just trying to find it here on the fly, and I couldn't find it. But it's a few years ago. How often do we take that up?
That would be a question for Scott Flurry, as to how often they go through that methodology for, so water, sewer, and transportation SDCs are all through the Public Works Department. I was on that technical advisory committee for the water SDC, and we're going through that, and that is the time that the city approved an automatic 50% reduction for units less than 500 square feet, a 25% reduction in SDCs for units between 500 and 800 square feet, and that was based on the anticipated smaller household size, therefore not having a commensurate impact as would a unit that was 800 square feet or larger that could accommodate more occupants. more occupants. So that was baked into the methodology for the STC because whatever's not collected from an accessory dwelling unit theoretically is collected by all development in order to pay for those impacts of those systems being maintained and upgraded because they're related to the future growth potential of Ashland. So, yeah, so that would be the time to fold that into it, and I'm sorry, I don't know the timeline when that's on there.
Yeah, thank you very much. Very exciting. So thank you for bringing this.
Counselor Nowitzki?
Yes, I just wanted to, to add the thoughts to what I think is a complete and eminently readable and very easy to understand document. I didn't know it had been going on for so long, but when I bought my property, one of the things that the Realtor brought up a number of times is the fact that there was plenty of room behind it that an ADU could be installed if we were so inclined. I was not, but I also have something that I call the inertial moment, which is always hard to break in order to get something moving. And what I have here, from the results that you've put out, is the opportunity for people to quickly get their questions answered. So incrementally, you have added to the opportunity of housing within this community, which is what we're trying to do. That's a great thing. Thank you for that, and I thank the team for putting that together. One minor thing I would call out, I've only had a few conversations on, on added housing in the community so far, but when they've talked about ADU, a couple of them brought up the idea of renting, excuse me, not renting, but traveler accommodation. And I said that I did not think that was possible and you may want to check on it. The guide mentions it. If you're not going to highlight it a little bit more perhaps in the guide because it's already printed, certainly part of the conversation when you're doing the consultation.
Yeah, and although the guide's already printed, some of the information is time-sensitive, so we do plan on updating the guide with regularity, as most recently is today to fix some typos on the one that's handed out in front of us. I should have mentioned also that we have a full website associated with this. I mean, the guide is in your hands, it's easy for someone to walk with, but as a lot of people get information on their phones or iPads, if they were to go to ashland.or.us or ashlandoregon.gov/ADU, all of this information is available in a very readable format online as well, that they can walk through these same steps.
Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and just to add to that, you know, PDF format and able to update is, is one thing that noted was that you had mentioned the deed restriction to have STC waives. I didn't see it in this document. Is that something that we can add? That's kind of a statement possibly.
We, we could. It might send people down a rabbit hole of whether or not that's actually viable with their lender, for instance. So if you have a mortgage on your property, they're probably reluctant to recording a thirty-year deed restriction in order to require affordability on that unit. But again, it's something that we can mention in the consultation if somebody wants to provide affordable housing. I know of one accessory dwelling unit in the last twenty-plus years that has gone through that step, but it was for a family member they knew was income-qualified and planned to live there for the next thirty years, so.
That was a, sorry, that was a statement that turned into a question, but thank you for that. The question I had was, what, what would you think it would be a good timeline relative to goals to track to see the efficacy of this? Should we make a little calendar note for a year from now to see where we are?
Yeah, I think so. I think what we'll do is because we've asked anybody that wants, right now, if they go online, they can only pull up the first two pages of the plan, a building elevation and a floor plan. They're not able to get access to all the engineered foundations, roof trusses, those details that are needed for submission. In order to get that, they have to do the consultation with our planning department, and so we plan on tracking that as how many consultations related to this program we have. You know, we do get ten, fifteen accessory dwelling units per year anyway, so it will be interesting to me to see how many opt for free plans or even go through this process and then decide they want to custom-design one. But it will have a metric in terms of a year from now of how many people have initiated that consultation process.
Perfect. Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions, Brandon. Thank you. I remember when we had our initial conversations about it, and it's always great to see these programs come, come across the line, and also to combine with the streamlining process that we've, that I know has been a major priority for you and your team. So thank you for your presentation. It's exciting. I know a lot of people who are moving back to Ashland, who have gone away and, and done their career or whatever, and they're coming back to live here with their children. They're looking for a way to bring their parents, a single or couple of parents, onto that property, and so I think this is a, a good way to move that forward. I have a couple of questions about the, when you mentioned that Counsel, following up behind Counselor Duquesne's question about the five-year tax exemption piece, is that something that might induce someone to, to make their unit affordable?
You know, I'm not sure. The, the distinction and you'd have to do an assessment of how much rent you could acquire. Unfortunately, rents are high enough in Ashland now that the difference between the market-rate rent and the affordable rent, you know, I presume that you're probably talking six to eight hundred dollars per month difference. So even over the course of one year, it may not, you may be able to exact more rent for the unit without doing an affordability deed restriction to compensate for the taxes and the STCs without it being an incentive. I actually even think the STC waiver is not so much of an incentive because of that market-rate rent value. The amount that we have to deed restrict the unit to be affordable under our program is substantially lower than they could get on the open market.
Right. Well, and I think that, that's, that's what we're, we understand, is that the market is not encouraging affordable housing. And, and I think there's also a difference between sort of what I call big A affordable, which is the, the sort of federal requirements versus something we might aim for that's more workforce, that's more middle ground. If, if they, if we said, you know, affordable plus some percentage gets you this whole other package, right? I, I'm not sure we could get to the big A affordable, but could, is there something we could do to get to that workforce housing space?
You know, it's something that we could look at. I would presume that, you know, a single-family home in Ashland may have an annual tax bill of forty-five hundred dollars or so. Adding an accessory dwelling unit might increase that to sixty-five hundred dollars or more. So again, is that two thousand dollar differential enough of an incentive for somebody to deed restrict their property and sign an agreement that they will rent it at, using the quick math, assuming it went up twenty-four hundred dollars for taxes, a two-hundred-month reduction in rent would then make it equal in terms of no difference. So you would really have to provide probably greater incentives to incentivize people to sign on to an affordability than just the taxes or STCs.
Well, and I don't think anybody would do it for the money, right? Since there's no money there. But, but I wonder if there's just a way to put together an incentive program. So if somebody is inclined to create housing that is, and, and they want to sort of aim it towards that kind of workforce space, that, that there would be some benefit to them to do that.
Yeah, one, one thing that we talked about, I think a number of years ago, would be the potential of the city creating a program by which the building permit fees, STC charges would be paid on a grant basis by the city in exchange for a signature of affordability. Initially, it was thought, you know, just to use pre-canned plans, but I think that that is something that would require funding to support and pay those STCs and building permit costs, and that might be a way to incentivize people that are otherwise thinking of preparing that unit for altruistic purposes or for a qualified family member that they know is going to be living there to seek out the assistance from the city to make that happen if it's necessary.
Great.
Not something that we've developed currently, but could be possible.
Yeah, it would be interesting to look at that because I think any place that we can create incentives, we know we're not going to close the gap entirely, but I know that there's a lot of people in this community that are concerned about affordability and about the economy and the need to be able to have people stay here. So if they're inclined to keep the, that rent low anyway, is there a package that could help them with that development is just a question that I'm wondering. I also have a question about the, the ten-year no travelers accommodation requirement that Medford has. And we, we have two multifamily zones where you can do that, correct?
Through a conditional use permit. I think in Medford, you can do them outright without that planning process.
So my question is, does it make sense for us to think about having anybody who is in one of those multifamily zones that can have travelers accommodations, that they sign a ten-year, no, we're not making this a travelers accommodation if we're getting free plans and assistance from the city?
Yeah, I, I think that that could be done, and then it would just be a matter of monitoring it as they came in for a planning action, but yeah, I don't see why that would be, you know, in terms of fiscal analysis side of things, that would not cost much of the city to have an agreement drafted through the legal department to be executed in exchange for plans if they're provided to people in multifamily zones.
Right, and I'm, I just suggest that because the whole point of building this program was to encourage the development of housing, not to encourage the development of travelers accommodation. And so I don't know if the council is interested in the staff looking into what it would take to, to have that sort of a, a sign-off for properties that are coming into this program in those two multifamily zones that allow travelers accommodations. Is there interest? Counselor Bloom?
So, two minds of this. I guess the question to lead me to where the answer I need to, to answer is, you said it's not a considerable staff time to develop something like that?
Well, I can't speak for the legal department, their priorities and what they're working on, but an agreement would have to be drafted that could be executed between the city and the property owner that was binding.
I'm just two minds here because it's, on one hand, yeah, we don't want just a bunch of, you know, vacation rentals, we talked about that, but we also just talked about not adding a bunch to staff time and expanding that. So, yeah, I mean, I think as long as we're not, it's not a huge burden to staff, it seems like it's a fairly simple process, then it would make sense and align with the goals that you just talked about on Saturday.
So maybe the question is to simply ask staff to, to answer, to take some time around this question and answer that more fully. How, how big of a lift is it? Because of, I think, that's right, those are the things we're trying to balance, and, and we don't want to make a beautifully simple system more complex than it needs to be. But other thoughts, is that, is that worthwhile to have staff look at those two zones and see if there's a way to differentiate the, the, the program? We have one, one look at it? What is yours, Senator?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yes. So short answer, yes. Shortish answer is, yeah, I would, I would like to see as part of that, and again, not scope creeping here, but we need to look at economic development lens too, just relative to how it all, how everything just fits together, whatever that looks like whenever we decide to do it. Just wanted to add that to it.
And that's right, I wanted to say, say the same thing. I'm not sure what the implications would be, so I'd, I'd like to look at it, you know, more, more systematic, systemically.
Counselor Hanson?
Yeah, and I think it's a great idea, but also the cost benefit of how many of these applications might actually turn into that kind of use if we have, as Counselor Kaplan shed a light on from, from Derek's conversation, we have three hundred units in the city of Ashland, and we might have one or two pop up that might fit into this annually. Worth considering, and I'd be curious what that cost benefit is too.
Yeah, and I think on some level, we don't know yet how much this program might encourage the development of traveler accommodation ADUs. You know, for people who aren't developers, it's a, it's an intimidating process, and if it's less intimidating, then, you know, where does that land? I don't think we know that. Counselor Nowitzki?
Just to weigh in, I mean, I, I agree that it's worthwhile to take a look, but I'm also in line with Counselor Hanson that it's so de minimis, probably, that I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, I'd just like a look at it.
Yeah. So, do you have what you need?
I do.
You do? Okay, great. Are there any final questions? Wonderful. Thank you so much, and, and congratulations to the team for bringing this across the line. So we now have our fire update.
So Mayor, could I have just one second before they start? So I just wanted to recognize Chief Sartain. This is most likely his last council meeting with us as he has decided to abandon the city and ride off into the sunset for retirement. So he's going to send us out with some good news about the program he's developed, but I just wanted to thank him for his many years of service and give you all the opportunity if you are so inclined.
May I do that afterwards because of my phone? No, sorry, I have to.
Yes, we'll, we'll take a little bit of time at the end of the, the evening today.
We'll, we'll breathe again.
Go ahead.
I'm here in council, Sabrina. I greatly appreciate it. Sabrina said this will be my last presentation for the city council, so I'm very excited to be here. I'm hoping to meet with your board members. Mayor, five years ago, you took a lot of time as a council member to convince me to change my mind about being the fire chief here, and I greatly appreciate it. It has been my honor, my privilege to serve as your fire chief with an absolutely unbelievable group of people that support the mission of Ashland Fire and Rescue when we're at Rock Bottom where we are today. I am so looking forward to your, the national hiring process. I think you will find, please have a phone calls, other people. Can I turn the mic on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
People can hear me. So I'm not starting that one again, no thanks. I might not make it. I've had a lot of interest where before we wouldn't have had that. So I'm looking forward to what, what comes with your, with the hiring process, and I hope that the, the fire chief comes to you the same way I did, has the same relationship with you, and it's all built on, on personality. And I thank each one of you. Doug didn't get a chance to meet you and know you very well, sir, but it was fun seeing you in the pre, the pre-council thing, so. With that, it is my pleasure to present an update on what would be the bedrock of what this council, the city administration, the fire department, and the budget committee has brought forward over the past four years. So with that, we will go ahead and update. I will be doing the update of the single world program. Director Barry will be doing an update on our PTO or PLO, and then Fire Marshal Shay, Deputy Chief Fire Marshal Shay will be updating on our femograms. So with that, thank you. Just as real quick, Doug, because you probably have never seen this before, this is currently, and the reason I'm saying currently is I'm going to give you a, a foreshadow, we're going to be changing the name of ASA to what's going to be called an ASP. I've spent the last two years with the leaders of Jackson County Fire and EMS Services, and we've been rewriting the ASA to make it to go into our, or our ASP to go into the future. So there'll be some very positive things coming our way. It's currently up, being reviewed to see if it can come back to this council or to the county commissioners to be approved, and so that when the ASP is going to come up for review in three years, we'll have some very good things to help the ambulance service move forward into the future, which are not available to us today. And that took a lot of effort by a lot of great people in this community and a lot of leaders. So as you see, there are only three fires, there are only three ambulance-based transport services in Jackson County. We make up ambulance service area three, which is Ashland Fire and Rescue, the little green on the light bottom, which is from the California border to Klamath Falls to the edges of Applegate up to just before Phoenix. So that's six, a little over six hundred and fifty square miles, and that's where your, your ambulance EMS-based system is going. All right, this is the one, Mayor, this is, this is, this is your bread and butter. And as you, as you guys all remember, one of the biggest things that I pride myself on is that the data I receive is not data that I create. It is all available from the emergency communications of Southern Oregon. They built out a website where the data is immediately put in, because if I generate my own data, I could, I could skew it. As any scientist knows, hypothesis is what you'd find, and then you do everything to disprove it. You do not take the information and handpick your own information to try to prove it. So I bring the good, the bad, and the ugly. The good and the bad was that in two thousand and twelve, when our call volume was averaging nine point eight nine, or nine point three nine calls per day, we went about every fifteen point two days between missing a call for service. And what that means is that someone called nine-one-one and we had nobody immediately available to respond. This doesn't mean that somebody doesn't come, it just means that it's not Ashland Fire and Rescue that is doing it. And then as you see, as you move along, two thousand and fourteen is where we, we took a nosedive. And that is what happened was, our system and our staffing model, without being increased, caused the call volume to increase with the call, the staff we had available, and it plummeted the calls between services for not, for no units available. And that continued through two thousand and sixteen where we hit two, every two point two seven days. This continued in, in a slight fluctuating frequency until we hit two thousand and twenty-one where we were averaging one point eight one days between calls. And then as we were building out the single world program, because we saw that the problem coming our way, and we knew it was going to happen, we built out the business model, which I had to prove to Joe, which you're very well aware of, and I had to prove to him that his business would actually show that this would work, and with the support of Sabrina and with Joe, we got the approval in the council and the budget committee for four teams. And those four teams, the first two, and as I asked, when I came before council, I asked you not to, to allow me to hold off on the second set of teams until last year because it was too much of a burden on our system and our staff to try to implement that program the way we rolled it out. And you approved that, which is what we did. And you'll see that when we bottomed out in two thousand and twenty-three in June, we were averaging point seven seven days between calls. It means every single day, someone called nine-one-one in the city of Ashland, and we had nobody available to respond. That increased... 911 in the city of Ashland, and we had nobody available to respond. That increased by the end of the year to 1.71, and I am very pleased to say that with the system we've designed, we're now up to every 3.17 days. And as you can see, we had 16.2 calls per day last year. That is an absolute testament to what the system can do and the way we've designed it. And Gina, this one's for you, specifically for you. So, one of the questions you kept asking me all the time was, do the fire engines and the ambulances go together? And the answer always was no, it depends on what it is. So, one of the things that happened in 2022 into 2023 is emergency communications of Southern Oregon changed their dispatch priority system. And it went from taking every single call and sending it out to reprioritizing it to nearly 30,000 call types. And what that did was it allows the computer to say that based on the information the caller was saying, an ambulance only is needed, a fire engine only is needed, or an ambulance and a fire engine is needed. And as you can see, we went from always being, having more right at or more priority calls to inverting it to going to our non-priority calls that went through the roof. And what that means is that only the ambulance without a fire engine is going to more calls. So, we're saving on our, we're saving on our fire engines, so we're not putting the wear and tear on those fire engines. So, again, this supports the single role program, because what that is saying is that our EMS system is supporting majority of all of our call volume. And one of the things that we fought really hard for in the ASP, which we're hoping the state will approve, is right now in Jackson County, you are not allowed to have a BLS ambulance. Mercy Flights is running a pilot program to show that it actually works. It's done throughout the rest of the country. It makes perfect sense.
What is that?
BLS is a basic life support ambulance, so we can put two EMTs on it, and so we can hire four, four EMTs, entry-level positions, to be on an ambulance to take care of majority of all of our calls, which is, as you can see, is transitioning. And then we can hire one paramedic to go between the two ambulances. And then we have the additional dual-role paramedics and act as a, as a transport person, so they can come in and pick up the call or be what they call a chase paramedic. So, there are BLS providers handle the majority of our BLS calls, keeping our paramedics, very similar to keeping our firefighters available. And that was one of the biggest things we fought hard to get in the ASP. And I'm pleased to say that RAZA right now is still in there. So, that can come back to the community and into the future. That will help us immensely.
Councilor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, sorry, I was just gonna get to why there's dust in your eye, but we'll do that later. The, can you explain, like, relative to the, to that pilot program that Mercy Flights is doing, when, when can we expect the results of that? When will we know how that looks and whether it can be implemented?
So, we've completed all of it. It is at the state level now. So, it's now, it's up to the state to approve the plan, and they'll get it back to Jackson County, and then Jackson County will get it before the commissioners. And at that time, we'll be asking for our electeds, as well as our fire service providers, to letters of support. And actually, when that is, it should be, it'll be before we renew our contract, or we're hoping within the next year, because we have a couple other ASAs or the ASPs coming up. And there's some, there's some other very cool things of radio interoperability, some transport stuff, some community paramedicine, some alternate destinations. So, like, right now, which one of the slides we'll get to is we're taking people to Grants Pass. I can take them, right now I cannot do it, but based on the new ASP, is I'll be able to take them to Valley Immediate Care instead of Asante or instead of Ashland Community. So, it'll actually keep our system more fluid and allow us alternative destinations. It's all part of the plan. This thing will be a complete rewrite for the community. It'll make the community of Jackson County much safer. So, and here's our slide, where we're transporting. As you see, back in the day, we used to mainly go to Ashland Community Hospital, and that has slowly transitioned to where Rogue Community Hospital is the one now picking up all the calls. And then the biggest one is that we are now going out to Three Rivers as part of the hospital, what they call load balancing. And so, we're picking up our patients and having to transport them to alternate destinations, which is basically Three Rivers or the VA or places like that. So, we're spending more time on the road, which means that the single role providers are much more important to keep because they're going longer and longer. And it's keeping our dual-role firefighters available for a fire event or car accidents or major, you know, major events in the city. So, it's working the way it was designed.
Councilor Bloom?
Yeah, for the previous slide. So, certainly it demonstrates the efficacy of the single role program. What I'm concerned about, though, is that if we're having to go out to Medford or in some cases Grants Pass, it seems like that's climbing up as well, is that effectively we're gonna slide back on our call volume. That, that's a concern that at least stands out to me, just on face value. So, I guess I'm curious, what is causing us to have to go out to Medford and Grants Pass? Is it because of capacity issues or specialization issues at Ashland Community Hospital? And if you have any thoughts, ideas on something that we should be thinking about moving forward on how to address that on that front?
So, thanks, Don. I appreciate it. That was a good tip. So, one of the things I met with Sabrina this last week, and one of the things the new fire chief should really be doing, is looking at two-part product for you as the council, as well as Sabrina and the fire department, is number one is what is your acceptable level of risk? And then number two is, what are the other agencies similar to us doing to transport and with the distances and things like that? And unfortunately, Ashland is a unicorn in more ways than one. And our ambulance system is very much a unicorn in the way we do things and the distance we're traveling. So, it's very difficult to find similar systems. But Sabrina has tasked us with that, and then the new chief, and then Marshall will be starting to work on it and then, you know, continue on. So, and to answer your question is, part of it is load sharing. Part of it is that the patient, trying to get people moved around so that the nursing staff can be able to maintain it. Some of it is sometimes the hospitals are closed for specialties and one service, because as you're well aware, not all three hospitals have the same level of care. So, if something, if a patient needs a specific level of care, we might have to take them someplace different. I mean, there's so, there's such a myriad of different reasons why that's occurring. But as you are absolutely correct, more and more that we're going farther and farther, it's better to keep them home, which is part of what the ASP rewrite, that we can have alternative destinations, that we don't have to go to Asante, that we can run up here to Valley Immediate Care, drop them off in the waiting room, get back into service without leaving the community. And that keeps that ambulance available for the, for the necessary calls that we need in the system.
Quick follow-up?
Quick follow-up.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. So, I had the pleasure of running into Paula Hyatt yesterday at the library, and she was discussing something, cards? She was, she was saying, so is there requirements that if there's a certain type of case, it flags that you have to go to a specific hospital because of the trauma center level or whatever that? So, it's not, it's not a decision that necessarily the paramedic, the driver is making?
Correct.
It is, there is a criteria spelled out that says, you have to go to this place because of, this is the need?
Correct. From penetrating trauma, stroke, stroke cardiac events, there's all kinds of different reasons. Childbirth, high-risk childbirth, there's all kinds of reasons that we have to go to specific, and it's all spelled out in our standing orders.
Right.
So, it's not a choice that the medic gets to make.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Kaplan?
Yeah, thanks, Chief. I mean, I, when, as, but I've heard you in the past, I've always thought of this as, you know, Ashland, our little six square miles, rather than the 650 square miles of the area. So, when you put that map on there, it really kind of raises the question for me, what, do we have each year reference those, those dropped calls? Is that, how often does that happen here within our city limits versus, you know, trying to get out to Roosh or up to, towards the Klamath Falls border? And that also shed some light on this slide too, because in some cases, it's actually just closer to get to, to Medford or to Providence than it would be to come to Asante.
Right. So, one of the things in the business model, and I'm sorry, Councilor Kaplan, I don't remember if you were in the, on the budget committee or on the council at that time. One of the slides that we did present was, we do have it broke down between what is within the city limits of Ashland, which is our 6.5 square miles, and then what is everything else. And so, that is very much available. That is, that is kept by EC SO and is put onto a dashboard for us that we can look at every single day. And the numbers off the top of my head, I don't even want to try to give you because I don't know right this second.
Okay.
And this one is another fun one from the business model. So, what you'll see is, what we did is we took the history of Ashland Fire and Rescue since we became an ambulance service in 1996. And then we averaged out what would be our moderate, which was the 7.295% increase in call volume, and then our low, which is 3.43%. The low represents the blue line, the moderate represents the orange line, and the two red lines are what we've actually done since launching this, this single role system. And as you can see, we're floating right in the middle of the two. So, if that, if that trend projects that by 2033, you'll see basically where we are with the system, with our call volume, if the trends keep going. And then one of the fun ones I get on a regular basis that I hear all the time from our, from our staff, from citizens, from all kinds of people, is why do I not let our single role EMTs and our single role paramedics do 24-hour shifts? And here is the slide. Besides the fact that it is absolutely unhealthy, that this, that shift work that we are on has been proven to cause cancer, has been proven to cause mental health issues, has been proven to cause increased blood pressure, has been proven to cause cardiac events, we know that the shifts that we work, the shift work that we work is detrimental to our bodies time after time, has been proven and proven, but there's no way to fix it without absolute exorbitant amount of cost to the community. Because you would have to add basically an entire new shift at the fire department to change our shifts and not add any more staffing. So, you're gonna, or you're gonna add one-fourth more personnel to keep the same amount of people responding to calls. We've become our own worst enemy by the way we've staffed systems over the, over the years of being in the fire service. So, besides the fact that I don't want to punish my, my single role staff for the awesome work that they do, this is the 12-year bell curve. And as you can see, other than the fact that the numbers are increasing because our call volume is increasing, the bell curve does not change. And so, what we've done with the system and the way I've designed the system and the way the new chief can come in and continue following the system is as we add additional single role providers, when you guys determine that it is a reasonable time to add it, and Sabrina says this is the time, we have the funding, this is what we need to do to keep the system moving forward, you add to the edge of the system. What that means, you add two more, two more ambulances to the system and you push their hours out. You keep the bulk of the time available between 12 or between 11:00 AM and 8:00 PM, and then you add to the fringe on the outside. So, you pick up more calls on the outside with that staff. But what you do is you keep the bulk of that resource available at our peak hours. And that is why it is a very specific timeframe. That's why they work a 12-hour shift, because they get beat up for 12 straight hours. We ensure, one of the best things that has been very successful with our staff is my supervisors at our battalion chief level. They are very intuitive of our staff. They watch, they make sure that our single roles get breaks, which is not necessarily available to all single role EMS programs out there. So, our battalion chiefs are very much involved with why we have such a successful program and why we have so many applicants who want to come work for us, is because we do take care of those guys and girls, because it does destroy, I mean, they are constantly going, they're turning their wheels, they get in the ambulance, and we may or may not see them until their lunch break. And then that's how they run the system all day long because we are a busy system. And so, with that, that is all I have for the single role update. And then I'm gonna turn this over to Mary Ann unless you have any questions for me.
Questions. Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Chief. I mean, our community thanks you so much for all of your service and the staff. It's incredible. When I first met you two years ago and you showed me that spreadsheet of the, of the business pro forma of what you were intending to do here, it was mind-blowing. And that's where my question leads us to. We have a lot of opportunity to, to improve those dropped calls from whatever it was previously. I don't know, Mary Ann, if you have that slide at your fingertips, but it was like, you know, every five days, there was, there it was, one more. Yeah, 15 days now to three. What, what do you think, if you could take this data, that spreadsheet, and what you've learned in these last two years, what do you think a possible vision for a future of, of Ashland would be? Would it be like more smaller ambulance, like Sprinter-type van vehicles? Would this be the kind of thing that would actually be a, an income stream for the city? I don't know. Just, just, what's your, what's your exit move here in terms of vision and where, where could we go? Big hairy audacious goals?
So, a couple of things on that. So, as I said, one of the things Sabrina has tasked us with is trying to find what is like and comparable. In the fire service, we have what we call acceptable level of risk. It is my job as your fire chief, it will be your new fire chief's job to inform you and to inform Sabrina what they believe the acceptable level of risk would be. And then it would be up to you as the, as the, as the council and the mayor and Sabrina to make the final decision. This is the acceptable level of risk. This is the risk we're willing to take in the community. And what that is, I can't set for you. That is gonna be what you are. But as far as what it is, we need to compare ourselves to other agencies, as Sabrina has asked us to. If we can find like agencies, are they dropping a call every day and that's acceptable to them? Do you want, you know, wherever it is? But as I said earlier, with the ASP rewrite, having two BLS ambulances, that is, they are less expensive employees with a paramedic than go between the two. One of the great things, and Mary Ann's gonna show you, is our, by hiring our current ambulance biller, we've increased our revenue recovery by 25%. So, we were right at about, I think, 3.7 or 3.28 is what we got from Tactical Business Solution today, is that's the number we came through. So, our revenues are coming up. So, the model, if you, as you can remember, when the flat, when the flat rate was, we set the cost of the fire department in 2020. And one of the things Joe, Joe said is I had to prove to him that it would be cost-effective for us to hire the single role employees and to cause that the ambulance services to offset the cost of the general fund. And we did that, I think it was about year 10, it dropped where we were actually with 18 more employees paying the same on the general fund that we are today, or back actually in 2020. So, it'll be, what is, when that occurs, and there's a lot coming to the ASP and the ASA or the rewrite, that will change community paramedicine, the BLS transports, alternative destinations, all that kind of stuff. And then the other thing is, as you're well aware, we just completed our, our CMS, Center for Medicaid Services audit. We were one of the final audit groups to try and get the federal government to re, to increase our reimbursement rate. Because one of the biggest problems that we have is, it takes, the government has to reimburse us for what we do, because our primary profile is Medicare and Medicaid. And if they are reimbursing us, which is what they're doing from 15 years ago, and not increasing based on what it costs for an ambulance today, not an oil change, the tires, a gurney, you know, back in the day was $12,000, it's now $75,000. So, all those things add up to where we're having to pay more and more. So, there's so many things that can make it more profitable and allow it to move forward. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm glad that you touched on the reimbursement rates, Chief. I know you and I have talked about that before, and where, where can that advocacy come from this body in terms of helping to move that forward? And it's certainly an issue for us. It is an even more critical issue for more rural fire departments and EMS service providers, because they don't have as much of a call volume. They're going across big distances, but in many cases, we are as well. So, so thank you for, for that update as well. Any other questions? We do have someone who has signed up for public, for public testimony during this piece. Mary Ann, did you have anything to, to add?
Yeah, well, yes. I think the financial summary that kind of provides a good perspective of what Chief Sartain just described might be applicable. I'm gonna go ahead and put that on the screen, and we'll drop this into the website as well. In fiscal year 2023, prior to the EMS role, single role program, we didn't have the numbers for those single roles, obviously, because we didn't have them. And so, really, the comparable, the comparisons are from fiscal year '24 on. We really have one year of a track record, but this does show that the program is netting a 1.6 million in revenue after expenses in fiscal year '24. I'm conservatively estimating 2.8, but the estimate that was coming from our vendor who we outsourced the collections to was giving us 2.8 to 3.3 million. So, we're on target to an increase in net position for the single role program. So, I wanted to provide that perspective. If we, if you want to pause there, the next slide is on paid overtime due to Oregon paid leave.
Okay. So, let's, let's take a break so that we can hear the public forum. And Chief, are you coming back for the overtime element?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you. We'll call you back up. So, Paul Mazina, you'll have three minutes. Actually, I guess you two can stay. We have our new system now. Sorry about that. Still getting used to it. So, Mr. Mazina will speak from the, the mic to the left, to his left. You'll have three minutes, Mr. Mazina, and Alyssa will give you the chime when you have 20 seconds left and a double chime when you're done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Paul Mazina, and I did want to start by thanking you all for your service to the community. I can't imagine how much of your free time you're devoting to this, but I sincerely appreciate it. I know it's a lot. And I did want to also praise the chief and the fire department and the budget process. Last year, we identified the need to add staff and bring up this singles, the new service to, as you described, I'm not doing a good job of explaining it, but you did, you did a great job and you reduced the, the number of days when you have missed calls. And I just, I wanted to also talk about, encourage you to take a little bit deeper dive into the data. I mean, we can, we see that we can scale up the services and continue to provide more services as we need to. But when you look at the, when you look at that, that call volume slide that the chief had out, you know, things were flat from like 2015 to 2019, and there was a decrease in 2020. I'm referring to the high priority calls, the orange line. But since 2020, the, the orange bar is steadily rising. And I just, I'm concerned that we're not, we're not taking a good look at the data. The chief has every kind of call type, whether it's a heart attack, breathing problem, blood clot, overdose. We have all this granularity of data that we can be looking at. And, and maybe there's some more data that we need to capture at the time of intake when the 911 call appears, or maybe the chief already has all this data. But I think I would like to see a much, a much broader presentation. But I think I would like to see a much, a much broader presentation of what's going on in the fire department with these calls. And we have, we have non-emergency versus emergency calls here, but how many of the non-emergency calls were just simply transfer calls? Or, you know, so I, that's what I would like to see you do. And I did send you an email with some suggestions of some things that I thought would be, just some simple practical solutions. I, I thought you could hire an analyst to do, hire someone to do an analysis of the data to gauge the significance of trends based on priority and call type factor and age and sex. I mean, we have, we know we're, we're seeing rise in cardiac arrests and, and heart problems and breathing problems, stroke, traumatic injury. And then we have, the chief has all the age. I, I sent you some graphs with ages and sex broken down. If you look in it, and you might say it was cherry picking, but when, when you're looking for a signal, you are cherry picking. You're saying what is unique about what's happening here? So it's not unfair to cherry pick when you're looking for signals that need attention. So I would like to see us drill into what are, what is the breakdown per sex, age, from the chief's data, from the, from the fire department's presentation rather than mine. And I think you'd trust that more. I ran out of time. But I did send you the email with some other suggestions. Have a health fair. You had a resource for have a health fair. And I did want to, again, thank the chief and thank you all for your efforts. You made a really great progress for the city last year and, or since the 2023 biennial. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. So before we move on, I just also wanted to acknowledge that this is one of those opportunities or these moments where our staff took a look at this issue from a completely different perspective and from the model, the business model, and, and said, what, what, what do we need to do maybe fundamentally transformationally different than what we used to do? And I think that, that innovation and that looking at these kind of challenges through that type of lens is what is going to allow us to continue to make this kind of progress. Sometimes it's, it's not running faster on the rat wheel, it is doing something fundamentally different. And so I just wanted to acknowledge both from the finance department and the fire department that that, that is appreciated. And we're seeing the results that you've brought into us tonight from that different way of thinking. So thank you. So you move on, we're moving on now to the next one. I think there are no more questions from the beginning presentation.
Okay. So we are going to review Oregon paid leave next and the impact that it has on the fire department's overtime. So in review, Oregon paid leave is a state mandated, mandated program, paid leave for family leave and safe leave. It was updated in July 1st of 2023 and effective the same day or same time. And in tandem, the fire department also has mandated staffing and Chief Sartain can talk a little bit more about that. Those two together have, have resulted in some overtime that increased in 2024 particularly. It was an, an increase of 127,000 in fiscal year 2024. That comes out to about $200,000 over budget for that year. And then we're also about 112 over budget in 2025. Do you want to speak to mandated staffing?
Sure.
For a bit, and then I'll go back to.
So as you're well aware, we have a mandatory minimum staffing on the dual role side as well. Our single role side's a little more lenient, but our dual role side is a mandatory minimum staffing of eight. And we have our maximum staffing of 10. And so one of the things we've talked about in the past and through the business model in the butt is to increase the amount of staff that's available and to not increase, ever do not to increase the minimum staffing model so that we can allow one more person off before we incur overtime. Because basically what happens is we have, we have two people off every single day for the most part. If someone is sick, injured, has a baby, or any number has a medical, medical situation, any number of things, we automatically generate overtime to get us back to the eight. And so we always have to operate with eight people on duty. And so what happens is, is when we had at one point, five people on PLO, two people out on, one person out on a long-term medical disability and one person who's still out on a medical disability, bring us to seven people off. We had to mandatory seven people a day for a period of time, every single day, to try to meet our minimum staffings. And then that what happens is then the people get burnt out. And then what happens is they start to, they call out sick, and then now we have to backfill their position and it starts this snowball that continues through the entire system. So the unfunded mandate by the state for paid leave Oregon does not do well for public service, especially when you have mandatory minimum staffing.
I will mention it's, it has an impact citywide, of course, but in particular on the fire budget. And in doing so, in looking at this, we are potentially anticipating doing a budget supplemental and returning to you in April or May. We're going to take a look at where our budget is for fire as we get closer to the biennium and see how well we have done this, this period and, and then determine how much potentially we would need to do for a budget supplemental. The thought is, is to draw from contingency. Currently contingency for the general fund is 1.2 million. And, and with that, I will pause and ask, and if you, check if you have any questions.
Counselor Bloom?
Yeah, thank you. Well, I guess just start by saying that I'm on family leave right now, so this is kind of awkward. But I don't save lives, so that helps. Look, I mean, we're in the position we're in, there's no really going back, we can't change the past. So looking forward to the future, obviously, we have some decisions ahead of us. The way I see it, that there's probably a couple of options here. That's either we budget for that overtime, which, okay, cool, then, then we can cover that, but that doesn't deal with the burnout issue, which is a concern of mine as well. So also, I guess the alternative is increasing staffing. But there's two parts to that, right? There's salary and then there's benefits. And I'm, I'm imagining that there is already conversations going on about whether we go one or the other, or there's a balance between the two. And I'm curious to hear what thoughts, if you have any, now that you could share with us.
Yeah, so the fire department has presented this idea of a, like a floater position where, you know, they can be called in during overtime. But a little more deeper analysis needs to be done because what happens when that floater goes out on leave, right? And so this just presents, just mandatory staffing in itself presents a challenge with overtime. So we're definitely going to need to assess, you know, our estimates around overtime. They're just, you know, not true based on history anymore, right? This new paid leave obviously adds a little kink in that. So we're going to need to do a little bit better on trying to predict overtime, but it is fairly unpredictable when people have babies, when there's a medical emergency. And like Mary Ann said, it's affecting all departments more operationally than budget-wise because if someone's gone, like I don't save lives if I'm gone, it's fine. So I think, you know, that's something we're going to do. So we're going to look at potential staffing models that the chiefs have presented and then do our best to kind of assess how it's going to go. The other thing we have is we have our own paid leave, so we don't pay into the state system because we feel that's what's best for our employees. But we are looking at two potential options moving forward is using the state calculation for what compensation you will get. So right now, we compensate employees 100%. The state mandate is your leave program must be equivalent or better than the state program. So we would maybe potentially look to alter our program to be equivalent to the state's moving forward to ensure that we're not seeing any abuse of the system.
So follow up, if I may?
Sure.
Because I'm living this right now, as is my, my wife. So a good example is that she gets provided by her employer, but she also can collect from the state and she can also collect through short-term disability. And obviously, it's different per, per employee, but I'm curious how that factors in. So, so let's say that somebody applies for, for family leave through the city program and they're collecting, let's say it's a, you know, 100%,
Sure.
And they're doing that for two months, three months. They can then go and apply for the state program, that's an additional three months. So with the city program, you have to pick one or the other. You do not get to double dip.
You can only have the city program under our program.
And are there conversations happening with the LOC in terms of getting the legislature to properly fund on, on their end? Now, I know that there's a pay-in that happens, it comes out of your paycheck that helps, but it sounds like it's not enough to cover the, the total amount. So, so what, what conversations are happening at the LOC in terms of legislative advocacy around that?
So not a lot of cities have this trouble necessarily because they don't have public safety. So it would be probably the fire districts that are seeing it more than other cities. Like Chief Sartain said, we're a bit of a unicorn. But I think, you know, and I've asked other jurisdictions, you know, paid leave is having an impact. And so what I've been vocalizing is, one, it should be fully funded or there should be at least a recognition that jurisdictions are having to pick up the cost of this, both operationally and fiscally. And two, that there should be a drawdown of your leave banks at the same time. So that's the other thing is that this paid leave does not impact your vacation or sick time. And so you can technically go out on paid leave and then take sick time, but you're not protected, right? So if you're abusing that, you're no longer protected status. You can have some, you know, follow-up actions with that if it is being abused. But I think it's just adding a lot of stress overall to the system.
Right.
So those are the two elements that we're looking at for our plan. Using the example of PERS, I'm not super excited to pay into a state system. And I think having control over our program probably does the best for our employees. But I think using the state's calculation for how much you get paid, so 80% of your wage, and then eventually negotiating with unions that employees will pay in to it, and that is a negotiation that would be had.
Sure.
And what we would do with that are two things. And so right now, we're looking at potentially July 1, changing it to use the state calculation for the paid leave, see how that goes and then transition further. So that's kind of where we are with that. So rambling here, but to sum up, yes, we're looking at staffing options and we're looking at changing paid leave. And I continue to be a squeaky wheel every time I get together with anybody who has anything to do with paid leave about changing it slightly.
Yeah, great. Thank you so much.
Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, this may have zero effect, but going back to your, what you, what you were discussing earlier about the ASA rehash, ASP, will that have any effect, better effect, worse effect? Have no idea. Best guess?
Well, as Sabrina very, very clearly articulated, the more people we add, the more people that are going to be on leave. The biggest thing, the biggest thing that we need to do moving forward is to separate the mandatory minimum from the contract up. So like a prime example, Medford Fire Department just hired 12 people. They did not increase their staffing level. So they are now allowed to take a couple more people off per shift before they go back into where they have to call people in. And that's the same thing. We have a much smaller scale. You know, it's, it's ironic that we're considered a large fire department in the state of Oregon, but, you know, we, we get to go against Tuolumne Valley Fire and Rescue, Medford Fire and Rescue, Eugene Springfield. We are not them, but we are a large agency in the eyes of the state. But we have very small percentage of people that can do the job. We have six captains, we have six engineers. When one of them are out, we have mandatory overtime to backfill their spot. So we have to be able to increase the availability of having more people move up, the availability of having a bigger pool at the, at the low end so that we can keep more people off. That's the only way you're going to save money. But as Sabrina, there's no doubt about it, the more employees you have, the more people are taking time off. So you're, you still have this revolving, you have this revolving door, it's just a matter of whether it's mandatory overtime or you give yourself a little bit of a buffer, but it will still be there.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you. Help me understand the, the staffing. Between our two firehouses, we have 10, 10 people on between the two or 10 in each?
No, 10 total.
10 total, okay.
And that does not count our single role providers.
Okay.
So it's our, we have 10 dual role providers, that is, that's our maximum staffing during the day. We're allowed by the contract, two people off, which gives us our minimum mandatory staffing at eight. And then anytime we dip below eight, we have to hire back to get us back to eight, which was one of the problems with that system.
Okay. Well, thanks. That helps just with the puzzle. But I'm curious from the, from the overage standpoint, did I just see a slide before that we're up 1.8? You don't have to go back there, but are we up 1.8 from our single role program, but we're down 1.2 from overstaffing? Is it that the?
The single role program is, is netting annually approximately 1.8 to 2.2 million a year. That goes to fund the entire fire department, so it is a, a net benefit for fire. The overtime, however, we budgeted $350,000 a year for the biennium. We are $200,000 over in fiscal year 24. And fiscal year 25, we're not done yet, but we're already 112,000 over.
Okay. So it, it seems as though overall, our, our fire department is above water fiscally, but this, this problem and this conundrum is going to come back for some sort of true-up?
Thank you for that question. We have already forecasted and appropriated the, the ambulance revenue. So we were already expecting that. That's in the biennium budget. It's been appropriated in the overall.
Ah, thank you, yeah. So we're not up?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So the program itself has funded fire, but it's already been appropriated. So we, we are over in overtime and.
Well, luckily, we're a social service-based organization and not a for-profit business. We can do things like this, but we need to plan better and work through the problem and, and all that. And I feel both of your pain, looking at these numbers, pulling out your hair. I mean, you know, well, sorry, Chief. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a, a quick question for you, Chief, just to understand. The, the eight minimum staffing level is driven by, by service level expectations and baked into the contract or?
Correct. And so, so, so at minimum staffing of eight, you have a cross-staffed fire engine at Fire Station Two. So that means that the two people that are remaining at that fire station are either on the fire engine or they're on the ambulance. They can't be on both.
Right.
So whenever the call goes out, they, this is one of the biggest things on the single role, the reason is to try to push that up. And then when you come over to Fire Station One, which is our downtown station, is where you have the supervisor, the battalion chief, then you have a firefighter, or you have a captain and engineer, then you have this, and then you have another ambulance as a backup. So that's where, that's where eight gets it, gets the people.
Sounds like a bit of a juggle.
It's a big, it's a big juggle.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Counselor Duquesne? Oh, you're, you're completed?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, you already answered my question. And I was just thinking Doug's question, and I just wanted to tell the chief, thank you for my slide, the clarity. Yeah, but you already answered my question. Thank you.
Great. You know, I think the legislature, like in so, well, like so many other places, is trying to figure out how to have healthier people. And when there's a medical situation in a family and a person can't take the time off to accommodate it, over time, that creates more cost. And I think we're at the beginning part of this, this process of transitioning to a place where we account for those costs in a different way. But we need to figure out what does that look like, like every other employer of a certain size needs to. And so I'm glad to see that we are looking at a variety of different ways that we, we move towards that. I know in the past, we've talked about, do you simply hire more staff because they're cheaper per hour than overtime? But as you point out, Chief, they all do different work. So, you know, that utility player, what does that look like? Has to be a very specifically trained type person to be able to fill, fill holes. So it sounds like you all are, are deep into the analysis for what this needs to look like in terms of our budget and our staffing protocols, and I'm looking forward to that conversation when you come back. Counselor Bloom, and then any other questions?
Not a question.
Okay. So, yeah, just a moment. So we are now about to move to the, to the FEMA question, but not yet. There is a golden hot seat, it appears, for our visitor this evening. We'll start it with Counselor Bloom.
Thank you. Appreciate that. You know, it was interesting when it was saying that Sabrina was saying this is probably your last meeting, and I was, of course, wanting to comment, oh, I'm sure we'll find a way to come up with some reason to get you back here before you're gone. I just want to say thank you for everything you've done. Nothing short of transformative, your time here as chief. And you've had an indelible impact on this community. It's going to be hard losing you. I feel you're kind of a kindred spirit. You're one of the few people I'm comfortable bantering with. You're one of the few people I'm comfortable bantering with. And shame on you for leaving me with that one other person. You know exactly who I'm talking about. But no, I, there's, there's really no words to say the impact you've had on this community. So thank you so much, and bless you in your retirement. Enjoy it.
Thank you, Dylan. Appreciate it.
Counselor Dale?
Going around the horn. Yes, absolutely. So I don't think I can outdo Counselor Bloom. I just wanted to say, thank you so much for taking the time as a freshman counselor coming on and just being thrown into this. And your patience, your professionalism, sitting down and explaining things to me time and time again about how it works, and my incessant questions, it was just, it really, really helped inform me. And that's what we have to do up here, is to take complex things and try to make the most informed decision. And your expertise, and your love of this community, and the professionalism, it was, it's just, yeah, I don't, I don't have the words to, to thank you enough for that. I feel sorry for the groundskeepers at local golf courses this summer, and the work that they will, and the overtime that they will have to put in, based on your golf scores. But the, we really just, just have a wonderful retirement. In fact, I know that that word is not in your vocabulary, and you're on to doing other purposeful things, but just enjoy. Enjoy time, enjoy time, every moment with family. And thank you again for your service, sir.
Thank you, Jeff.
Counselor Nowitzki?
Chief, we never had the opportunity, but listening to your presentation tonight, and your command of the facts, your clarity of explanation, and just the, the easygoing way in which you talk about the subject and make it look like there's going to be a solution here, I wish we'd gotten the chance. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it.
Counselor Hanson?
Yeah, likewise, Chief. I've had the, the pleasure of working with you and your team on the other end of things from this, from this council, but also out in the field, where you've helped us, and you've taken care of us, and you've patched us up, and you've saved us. So I thank you for your intellectual exercises in making us a better community, and also for the day-to-day of keeping us safe and our loved ones safe. So I wish you the best. Thank you for your service. Cheers. I appreciate it.
Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. Honestly, I'm going to miss giving you a hard time. I'm just going to keep it real. So I hope the next person can, can deal with me. So thank you so much for your service, and happy adventures.
Dana, I couldn't ask for a better person to banter with. You were absolutely fun. It was never personal.
No.
It was absolutely always awesome, and thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Kaplan?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Chief, so much respect, how you've, you've thrown yourself completely into keeping this community safe, and finding better ways to do the things that, you know, we know that the fire department, you know, has to do, both on the fire side and on the, on the ambulance side. You've shown tonight a little, a small glimpse into really rethink, rethinking how we go about the business of, of keeping this community safe. Really appreciate everything you've done for the community, and everything that you've, you know, really thrown yourself, self into. So thank you, thank you so much, and happy trails.
Thank you, Bob. I appreciate it.
So I have, over the years, called the fire department a shocking number of times for a variety of different things, and I blame the children for most of them. But through those years, every time I have called, I have had incredible people show up and take the chaos that was my reality at the time, and put it into order, and help get to the place where the people I love the most in the world were safe. And that has been true all through the time I have lived here in Ashland. What I have appreciated so much about you is that you have maintained that service level, even though they couldn't get to us maybe as quickly as we wanted. When they have been able to get there, they have been wonderful people, and I think that that's a testament to your leadership. But it's also true that we are having totally different conversations now than we were four or five years ago. We were having conversations at that point about holes that should not be in a fire department, that were still there. And those holes are not there anymore. We have, we have pulled those pieces together into a coherent structure that I think allows us to move forward now, and to maintain that service level, and to keep our people safe. But now to be able to do it with very different models, very different thinking, with innovation in the, in the space and in our community, and that is really because of your willingness to look at things differently, to try something we weren't sure exactly how it was going to work. That's not always a common trait, and it is one of the things that I have appreciated the most about you. And, and the fact that you answer my questions, that clearly, I am, I am not a firefighter. So thank you so much for answering those questions, and for leaving your department in the incredible shape it's in. I hope you have wonderful adventures, and that you enjoy your retirement, and, and wherever it takes you. And if we see you again before the end of March, that will also make me just so happy.
Appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. And so now we will move on to the FEMA report and update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Shea, Fire Marshal, here this evening to present an update on the FEMA PDM grant. The current grant period is set to expire March 31st, the end of this month. Staff has applied for a grant extension that was submitted to.
PDU?
Pre-disaster mitigation?
Pre-disaster mitigation. Thank you. That was an on-the-spot question that I wasn't prepared for. Staff has submitted the grant extension application to Oregon Emergency Management. It was approved by them, and then forwarded to the regional FEMA office where it was approved. It was then subsequently moved to FEMA headquarters in Washington DC for the final approval. We have not heard back from FEMA headquarters at this time, and so we are cautiously optimistic with the evaluation of expenditures at the federal level that will get the extension. With that, we are not opening any new projects currently, because we don't want to open a project and that extension not be granted, and not be able to reimburse those property owners. So we are currently closing out those projects that are currently open. If we do receive the extension, we plan to revisit all of the properties on the list of, that was determined when the, the grant was applied for, so the, the high-risk property list. And we're even going to go back to property owners that may have been contacted a year or two ago, and re-approach, and see if they're, they're willing to participate at this time. As for that grant extension, if we are granted that extension, it will move the grant out until April of 2027. So we'll have an additional couple of years to provide those services. So far this year, 2025, we, the grant has reimbursed $19,350 for defensible space projects, and $10,000 for the replacement of a wood shake roof. Are there any questions on the FEMA grant?
Questions? Counselor Bloom?
Oh, sorry, no.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Yeah, I have a couple of questions that I shared with you before the meeting, so I would, thanks for this information about how much you spent this year on defensible space and roof replacement. But I'm wondering if you can give us an update compared to last year? Because last year, we were, actually, it was May, it wasn't in March, where you gave us information about the number of properties that had been already mitigated, and you were expecting at that time, a real ramp up of, of efforts to be able to do, I think it was 10 to 20 assessments per month at the beginning, and then moving, moving back, moving up even higher than that through the year. I'm wondering, what sort, what number of assessments have you been able to done, and what's the total number of properties now that have been mitigated compared to that 155 last year, and the 11 shake roofs that were, that had been mitigated already by last year? And then one last question, which is slightly different. I'm, I know, one of the things that you told us about last year was the iPads, and using it, using technology a little bit more effectively to do the assessments, the wrap assessments. I'm wondering if that's also now uploaded into a database that can be georeferenced, and really help neighborhoods, and not just individual properties?
Yeah. Since May of last year, we have mitigated 173 properties, and 13 roofs have been replaced. We've conducted 56 assessments, which has not been on par with the estimate that was given at that time. Properties that, that are assessed are actively placed into a GIS layer. Currently, that's not shared publicly, but we do have that geospatial data of the assessed properties, so that we could help out those firewise communities on making some more broad-based decisions. Or as we're looking at community risk reduction from the fire department level, we can make decisions on where to more effectively place resources because of, of these assessments.
On that, on that last, thanks, thanks, Mark. On that last point, so I appreciate that it's not widely shared, but if a neighborhood comes to, comes to you and asks for that information, so that the neighbors themselves can figure out how best to allocate their resources, you would be able to share that with the neighborhood group?
Yeah, yeah, I think we could share that, as long as we ensure that it didn't have any private information in the data set. So we could certainly work with our staff and share that information.
What sort of private information would, I'm not, I'm just.
You know, as we're doing an assessment, maybe it has their, their name, their phone number, their email address, that sort of thing. Just basic demographics.
Yeah, got you. Thanks.
And then you had the question about the technology?
Well, that's.
Oh, you just, that was the piece of, of that element? Okay. Counselor Nowitzki?
Just a quick question on the, the assessment process. Is there a way in which this, this assessment and this outline is circling back in order to see that the things that were recommended to the homeowner, other than the examples of the roof, which, you know, obviously got done? But that the, the recommendations are being partially or completely implemented, so that the property is actually more resistant to a wildfire coming through, and not just having been assessed at being at this level, and we don't know anymore?
Yes. For the, for the FEMA grant, when we conduct an assessment, there's a pre-assessment, and then once the property owner recontacts us and says that they have the work done, we'll conduct a post-assessment to make sure that that work has been completed. That then qualifies them for the reimbursement through the grant.
I understand that the, the original grant had identified the specific property locations of 1,100 properties that we had identified as the most in need of risk reduction activities. And so have all of those homeowners been contacted over the course of this program?
They were all contacted initially, but I believe if we're granted the extension, they should be contacted again, just to, to ensure that they have the ability to participate.
Well, and I recognize that the, the, the operational time of this grant landed as we were coming out of COVID, and actually, part of it was in, in the middle of COVID. And so the, that, all of that disruption, I know, has impacted the ability to, to move through these properties and help, really put the timing to help people understand what's available to them through the grant. So I'm hopeful that we will get the extension that we have asked for. But then when we do, it will be important for us to know what the plan is, to make sure that we have been able to make the very best use of the rest of that funding that, that the earlier disruptions prevented us from making use of. So I'm assuming that this would come back to us at some point. We would see a, a, some sort of a, of a plan to make sure that we're going to hit these targets? Okay.
I think once we have confirmation about the extension, we can put, put it together.
Yeah, put that together. Counselor Nowitzki?
Thank you. I, I wasn't here for the original implementation of all of this, but I was just wondering, what was the size of the grant versus the amount of money that has been distributed, which would give us an idea of the uptake on the part of the citizens?
I wasn't here for the original implementation of the grant either. I came in, actually, a couple of years into the grant, here near the, end of the grant period. I know that originally, it was $3 million. I don't have the dollar figure on what we've expended.
Okay. Sorry, I should have given you that beforehand, that question.
Yeah. If you could maybe send that to us, it looks like there's interest in knowing where we're at in the overall grant space. Counselor Kaplan?
Yeah, I think, thanks, Mayor. Really, just the, the point that you made earlier, you know, I felt like last year, we expressed quite, quite a sense of urgency about ramping up the, the activity. And so to hear that, you know, so two roofs and, I can't remember what you said, 13 roofs and, you know, 18 properties were improved in, in the last year, and only, you know, a much slower period, number of wrap assessments is disappointing. Obviously, we can't do anything about that going back, but I would really love, I would like to, you know, give more formal direction, that if it is extended, although in the next month or so, that we actually have, you know, a real serious conversation about what it is that this council needs to do in order to accelerate this, push this forward, make this, this incredible program for our community, when wildfire is the highest, you know, concern on everybody's mind, that we, you must have hit some incredible roadblocks as well in term, in terms of implementing it. So I'd like to understand that and see what we can actually do to put more, more oomph behind it, if we get the extra couple of years from the, from the federal government. It's a big if at this point.
Well, and I think that that's what the goal would be, was to, is to have staff come up with a plan that will get us completely across the line in that extended time period, and then the council will have an opportunity to talk it through in more detail.
So I'm, I'm wanting to give formal direction for that, rather than just assume that's going to happen, because it's, I think it's a super important thing. So I'd like to just, I don't know. The nodding of the head seems.
Yeah, it's a, we don't vote at, at a council study session, so head nods, if that is something you would like to see, and we have a unanimous head nod. So yes, we have formal direction. Thank you. Anything else, Counselor Kaplan?
Nope.
Okay. Any final questions about the FEMA grant? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to talk about weeds quickly. That's the easy one. Best for last. Right, Mark?
And noxious, noxious vegetation too, right?
Noxious vegetation, not just weeds. I apologize. Don't want to leave that out.
Noxious.
Okay. Good evening, once again. Mark Shea, Fire Marshal, going to discuss revisions to AMC 904, weeds and noxious vegetation. Essentially, this revision of this ordinance, the proposed changes are an effort to align the ordinance with current practices, provide additional time for compliance prior to fire season restrictions, and to correct some grammatical errors. And I've broken down the proposed changes. So the first is under section 904 005, definitions. We propose replacing his or her with their to be more grammatically correct and gender-inclusive. Additionally, in definitions, in this ordinance, summer season is defined. It's currently defined as May 1st through September 30th. We propose revising that to May 1st to October 1st. The reason is, in the past few years, fire season has begun earlier, generally June 1st, and is lasting longer. So we want to reflect that within this ordinance. And this next section, 904 020, responsibility, responsibility of owner removal of weeds. This is the section that outlines the responsibility of property owners to clear weeds, the tall weeds, and the noxious vegetation prior to what's defined as a summer season, and then maintain that throughout the summer season. So in this, I'll just read the, the first sentence or so here. The owner of any lot or parcel of land within the limits of the city of Ashland shall cut and/or remove weeds growing thereon, and on adjacent and abutting rights of way between, it's currently is May 15th, proposing moving that to May 1st, and currently June 15th, proposing that to be moved to June 1st of each year. The intent here is for property owners to be able to remove those weeds prior to the implementation of fire restrictions by Oregon Department of Forestry. What we're currently running into with the date set to June 15th is, we're requiring removal of the weeds. However, fire restrictions have come into place. It makes it really challenging for property owners then to comply with really conflicting rules. A rule telling them that they need to cut this, and a rule telling them that they can't. So we'd like to, to get that cleaned up and make that easier for, for folks. Section 904 040, notice to abate, we propose changing city recorder to code compliance off, code compliance officer. This is per the definition in AMC 108 005 of code compliance officer. And it's also in line with AMC 2.31 Uniform Violation Abatement Process. So that'll keep things in line with those other ordinances. Moving on, 904. compliance off, code compliance officer. This is per the definition in AMC 108 005 of code compliance officer, and it's also in line with AMC 2.31 Uniform Violation Abatement Process. So that'll keep things in line with those other ordinances. Moving on, 904 050, notice to abate, continued adding or authorized designee to fire chief, allowing more staff to be able to conduct these processes, and then replacing council with city recorder and finance department, again, aligning with AMC 2.31 as it's currently written. And then finally, still in 904 050, notice to abate, once again, replacing city recorder with count, or, excuse me, reporting, replacing council with city recorder, and adding in appeals shall be filed with the municipal court no more than 10 days following the placement of said lien in accordance with AMC 2.30 as it's currently written and adopted. The remainder of that paragraph can be deleted because it is no longer relevant with those changes proposed. Any questions?
Counselor Bloom?
Yeah, just one. That was very straightforward, pronouns, adding a couple of weeks, makes a lot of sense. I have to just ask, and I'm not being flippant about this, did you put this presentation together?
I did.
Because I'm dead serious that when we look at ordinances in the future and revisions, this is, I think, the best way to go forward, rather than reading it off and getting lost in the weeds. I think it's really helpful that we have something, boom, here are the changes, very simple, 10 minutes, and we're, we're done with it. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselor Nowitzki?
I just wanted to double check on the, the first slide that was talking about the code. You were talking about extending the fire season. Back up one more, I think?
Yeah.
No, all right, let me see.
Yeah, yeah, September 30th to August 1st, moving it one day, is that the intent?
That is the intent. That's not going to change fire season per se, but as fire season's declared to begin and to end is per the district forester for Oregon Department of Forestry. We can't predict always when it's going to end, but it's generally sometime in the beginning of October.
Sure, it varies. And the only reason I brought it up is I thought that it just might have been a typo, because last few years, October's been quite hot. Thank you.
And I've, I'll just ask a follow-up to that. Is, is there a reason it's not October 15th?
No reason.
And would it make sense to maybe do that?
We could certainly revise it to October 15th.
Counselor Nowitzki?
I, I thought, based on your, your answer to me, that it was set through some other mechanism that said this is considered fire season. If I can, if we can control it, yes, I think it's a longer season.
So the end of it comes officially when it's declared by the Department of Forestry, whichever is later. So that's the season, except it's not, because the Department of Forestry usually pushes it out.
Push it out.
So this is just, this is our, our backup, in case it's shorter, there's like a, a set time period, but it's really the Department of Forestry that's setting it.
Caveat.
Okay. Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you. I, I have to agree with Counselor Bloom, straight and to the point. So this presentation that you put together, this is for private property owners, right?
It, it's for all properties in Ashland.
For all properties, so that means that if it's a city-owned property, that the same, we debate in the same timeframe applies. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple of things. Yes, I have on my notes here, Counsel Bloom covered it too. I really, Sabrina, appreciate the fact that this, we're doing ordinance editing in a study session is a phenomenal way to do this. So thank you very much, Mark, as well. So, and yeah, I was to follow up to the follow-up about the October 1st. I was fascinated about what that 24 hours was, and if there was anything that, and I understand it's, it's of any year, at the, at the end of the fire season, whichever is later, but barring anything we're not thinking about relative to any fiscal impacts or whatever, again, I just have to ask, why is this not October 15th, as far as pushing that back? I mean, I understand it's whichever is later, but that is kind of a statement there. But I don't know if that has any kind of adverse effects of why we wouldn't do that if we're, if we're in the middle of this ordinance, let's do it right.
Doesn't matter either way. We just need direction. So tell us you want it the 15th, and we can do it. Move on.
And, yeah, that's, that's it for now. We'll wait for another one.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yeah, thanks. So on this, this point about the one day, September 30th to October 1st, I mean, I think what's most important is the beginning of the fire season. That's, that's really where we're trying to get people to go ahead and start cutting their, cutting the, cutting their weeds, weeds and noxious vegetation. So, you know, September 30th versus October 1st, I wouldn't even change it. I'd just keep it at September 30th, because really what's, what's operative is the declaration by the Oregon Department of Forestry. So it's kind of, looks, optically, it looks a little funny to just change it by 24 hours, and that's what raised all the questions. My question is really less about the ordinance itself than the enforcement capacity of the ordinance. I know people have, people, you know, complain about weeds and noxious vegetation that doesn't get cut, and I'm wondering, I gather that it's a complaint-driven approach, and I'm wondering about the code compliance officers cap, capacity to really get out in, in a timely way, right at the beginning of fire season, and then repeatedly during fire season as weeds and noxious vegetation grows tall again, getting back to those properties. Can you just enlighten us a little bit on, on do we have real capability to, to follow through on, on, on this, I think, an excellent ordinance, and, and the changes that you have proposed, I think, are, are spot on. So I'm happy to support them.
Yeah, certainly. In the past, we have had a issue with staff capacity. Sidney Jenkins, sitting behind me, Fire and Life Safety Specialist, is the code compliance officer that, that's handling this, and he does have a multitude of, of other duties. This year, we are working to tie in the CERT volunteers more, so we're going to get CERT volunteers out, being proactive and inspecting these properties. We're looking to fully utilize see, click, fix as a, as a tool to maybe be more responsive to these complaint-driven properties. And then also, last year, we began tracking data of what properties were out of compliance, and how long it took to get those properties in compliance. We're going to be proactive this year at the beginning of May, go take a look at those properties that we had, that were in violation last year, and just early in May, work with those property owners, if they are out of compliance, to get into compliance earlier. So we do have a plan to add capacity with CERT volunteers, and be more proactive as opposed to completely complaint-driven.
Just a follow-up. I, I wonder if there may be some opportunity to, to use the city, all the city's tools of communication to actually alert the whole community that this is what you're doing as well, and that, you know, the see, clicks, fix, I think, is a terrific, you know, tool for that. People have to know that, yes, that's one of the things that they can see, click, and fix. Maybe as, if you've got properties that are recalcitrant, what about posting, posting addresses that are recalcitrant? So, so neighbors know that, you know, they're, they're, they've been spoken to, they've been cited, or whatever, and, you know, they, maybe they can exert a little bit of neighborly peer pressure for those really extreme cases where there's something that, putting in the whole neighborhood, the whole city at risk.
Yeah, we, we do want to explore all means of communication. Our best form of enforcement is prevention and education. In addition to that, Sidney has created door hangers that are educational, so that we can have those CERT volunteers out in the community, and hang those on folks' doors, letting them know about the ordinance and the requirements and timelines.
Great. Thanks, Mark. I appreciate it.
Counselor Nowitzki?
Just a couple of quick, close the detail pieces. My, my interest in, in the October 1st date, I understand Counselor Kaplan's comment about 24 hours, why should we give it too much of a thought? But I think some of this is also optics. When we're talking to our citizens here, and they recognize that the summer season is going much later, I would like us to be at least considering the idea of saying that we recognize that, we are designating that as such, and that we are going to be investigating during this time regardless of what the Forest Service says. If it rains in October, the code compliance officer doesn't have to go out. But nonetheless, it says that we're paying attention to the changes that we're seeing smacking us in the face. Second question, that was a statement. Second question, first question. What, if any, impact effect coercion do we have for properties that butt up against unincorporated areas?
That's been a question for some time, those properties in the county that, that have but city. At this time, I don't believe we have any. There is no weed ordinance within the county. So I don't believe that we have an enforcement arm outside of the city limits.
Okay.
Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, and just to follow up what Counselor Kaplan was saying too, it is, we've got, I mean, we, we just spent last Saturday talking about all kinds of things, and, and it was crystal clear that all of us came out of there saying that wildfires at the top. And there's zero question that this needs to be measured, this needs to be promoted, there needs to be absolutely zero people in this community that do not know about this program and how it works, and what we'll do about it. If you could call up the slide, the one where you crossed out a bunch of words. And, and I'm not meaning to, on one hand, I'm not meaning to over, over-rotate too much on the stick, you know, versus carrot and the stick. But you crossed out the last portion of the last line, is we're, we're getting to a point where we're serious about this, about liens being declared on property involved. And I just would like staff to just kind of consider why we deleted the very last part that says, "and shall be certified to the county assessor in the same manner." I mean, if we're going to take it seriously, let's take it seriously. So that's just something to think about. I'm not, there's no direction there, but it's something where if we, if we're going to get serious, which we absolutely have to, we've got it, we've got, we've got to get serious.
That, that was deleted because it is language in AMC 2.31. And so, as opposed to having the redundant language, we still have that ability to lean, we're just essentially leaning on.
Lean with whom? Either the city and the city and the county is what I'm talking about.
It's the county.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions. Thank you for your presentation. Can you define for me a general fuel modification area? It's identified in the, in the, I've seen it a couple of times in here, where it talks about, so 9.04.011, prohibited flammable plants declared nuisance. It says, "The planting of species identified on the prohibited flammable plant list within a general fuel modification area in the city is declared to be a nuisance." So what is that? How do we know what those areas are?
Sidney may be able to help answer, general.
Come on up if you'd like to.
I can give you a loose answer. It's typically the first 30 feet around a house, but it could also apply to a structure that's a new development, and then they have a fuel modification area that's tied to that development.
So if somebody violated our, the, the ordinance that we put in place a couple of years back, where a new, new construction or a significant remodel can't have these, these prohibited plants planted within a certain space, then the ordinance that would become, the way we enforce it is this one, with this particular element. It seems to me that we are spending a lot of time trying to get people to take these prohibited plants out, and we've said you can't have them around new construction, essentially. Is there, is there a conversation we should be having about them anywhere in the city?
There, there's a conversation occurring at the community level as the CWPP, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, draft is being developed. Once that draft is accepted and we receive those recommendations, we will work with community development, because that's also a planning issue, is those plants, to redefine that and, and reengage that process.
So it sounds like that conversation is coming back to us?
Correct.
Great. And then, how, where do dead trees fall in this whole conversation? Because, and I, and I ask it because when I was on the wildfire safety commission, there was a big conversation about, I think, revisiting the nuisance laws, to say that if you have a dead tree, it, it needs to be taken out because it presents a nuisance, essentially. There was, we were trying to figure out where does this live? But I'm just checking that at this moment, if my tree dies in my yard, I am not obligated to remove it? Is that correct?
Not under this ordinance, do you know of a?
Nothing that the fire department does. We don't have a code that we enforce for trees.
Sidney, can you pull that microphone towards you a little bit closer? Thank you.
Yeah, the fire department doesn't enforce dead trees. If it's a nuisance, it typically goes to city code compliance, or it'll go to the electric department.
So we have, we have, city code has a regulation that says you have to take out a dead tree? And I realize you wouldn't necessarily know that, because you're not city code compliance, but I, it seems like this might be a hole, that, and I wonder if this is a place to fill it. I mean, it's, it is vegetation, this is just dead vegetation, right? It's hazardous. So I, when we're talking about this coming back to us, I wonder if this is a place to address dead trees?
One, one challenge with dead trees versus vegetation that's defined in here that we're currently working with is, you'd need more education to define if a tree is really dead, if it's really hazardous. We don't have the ability to look at a tree and define whether it's truly dead or not at this code compliance level. There's some aspect of that being done at the forestry level, but on an individual level, I think it does prove... There is a challenge of needing essentially expert qualifications to determine if a tree is, is dead and needs to, to be removed.
Follow on to this, Counselor Dale?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay.
Mark, I appreciate that. And I understand, I'm not a forester, I can look at a tree and see if it's really dead. So I think there has to be something within the code that would, that would be able to, I mean, I understand if it's kind of on the, you know, bubble of whatever, and maybe some, there are trees in my neighborhood where I've looked at them, they're pine trees. They're, they're brown, all of it. That's a dead tree, and I, we can, we can identify. So I understand kind of the gray area, but there probably needs to be something in here that you guys, that we could just think about maybe putting in there, just to be able to have a, a lever if we need it.
Counselor Bloom?
Yeah, I mean, I, obviously, we want to do something about this, but I imagine the hesitation of putting something like that in there about being able to define what is a dead tree or not, rather not, you know, of course, we can see it, but we're talking about taking liens out on people's houses if they're not in compliance. And if somebody wanted to legally challenge that, and we were wrong, I could see that being a huge legal issue. So certainly, we need to have a conversation about it, but maybe this is not the place, maybe that there's, there's another, you know, code that we could put in to discuss that, because, yeah, I could see a huge legal issue with that.
I, I would just follow up in, in terms of where it matters to us is this. It's fire, right? That, that's what the issue is. And it seems to me, because this is, this can be very expensive, taking out a tree, especially a big one, is an expense, it's a significant thing. And when that conifer is brown, or that deciduous tree, it's August, and there's no leaves on it, I don't think the landowner is going to say, "I don't think that tree is dead." I think what they're going to say is, "I can't afford to take that tree out." And that's a, that's a totally different question. I don't think, I'm not suggesting that we should, we should say somebody who has a lot of expertise, because they, those people can look at a tree and say, "It's dead already, you just can't tell", right? Arborists will tell you that. That tree is already dead, it's just going to take a while for it to, to look dead. That's not what I think we're looking at. I think what we're looking at is the obvious dead tree, and how can we, and maybe, maybe it is a, putting it in somewhere that says you have to, you have to dispose of it, but then recognizing that that's a significant expense, and are there ways that, that we can assist in some fashion to help them do that? And, and I just wonder, it seems to me that, to be a huge hole if what we're actually talking about is reducing wildfire risk. And so where does it sit? It sounds like maybe there's some interest in taking it up. I don't know if this is the appropriate place for it. Counselor Dale?
Yeah, if I may, and I think. Yeah, if I may, and I think this is the beauty of discussing ordinances in a study session, because we can do this and kick around ideas and say, maybe we, you know, if you guys put your heads together and maybe think this might work, and then when we bring it back, we can kind of kick that around. But I think, at least give it some thought, if you wouldn't mind. I really appreciate your guys' professional opinion on that, and you guys, this is what you guys do, and again, as subject matter experts, this is just something, as a priority, I think we need to at least try.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was just curious if maybe the FEMA grant program would be applicable for tree removal. I also too wanted to comment that I really like the way that we're dealing with ordinances here, and we should, we should think about this as the weed abatement approach to not getting in the weeds.
Well said.
But yeah, I'm curious if that FEMA money could be applicable to something like tree removal.
I think it could.
If it was on the right property, right?
Correct.
Right. Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that was a good question because what the mayor brought up, it's not the point is dead or alive, but I just can't afford to have it removed. I think that would be number one, coming from a property owner, and so, seeing if that can be, you know, the cost of it can go into looking at FEMA, could cover it, would be great. However, how comfortable, how sure, confident do you feel that this is going to be extended, this grant?
I might intervene. Yeah, I don't know that there's any way for our staff to answer that question at the moment. Maybe Sabrina wants to take a run at it.
So, I think I would recommend, you know, fire season is coming, we want this in place so we can do that this year. I think what we're talking about falls more, yeah, it's under nuisance, but potentially it's its own section, because I think we're talking about having more enforcement around the type of vegetation we don't want to see here that causes fire danger, and I think it's probably a bigger discussion than just dead trees, because I think this goes hand in hand with some of the experience we're having with our FEMA grant of people not wanting to remove certain vegetation because they like it, right? And we don't have an enforcement mechanism, which kind of defeats the purpose of the home hardening grant. So, I think this is a bigger discussion. So, I would propose changing the date to October 15th, because at the end of the day, the forestry department will determine it, leaving this as is, and we have a bigger discussion about adding something under nuisance that talks about dead vegetation removal and requirements to add to our code compliance element, as well as talking about a stick to go with the carrot to get the type of vegetation that's appropriate.
I think that's well said, but still, we.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Duquesne. No, no, you're fine, you're fine, I'm just trying to keep the order, I see you all. Keep going.
Okay, and thank you for that explanation, and I think that kind of wraps it all together and so that the verbiage can be in there for additional information about trees, but so, still, we don't have any certainty or confidence about this grant.
No.
No, we don't, but I think that's a separate conversation. I would like this in place for fire season so we can start moving forward, so I think if we can focus on getting this through and bring it back for adoption, we can definitely circle back to when the grant's extended and the plan there, as well as taking up the bigger discussion about what I would call nuisance plants, not noxious weeds or noxious vegetation or weeds or whatever.
Counselor Bloom?
Yes.
Counselor Nowitzki?
Yes, but I just, Counselor Hanson asked the question that I was going to ask. We sounded like we had very poor uptake of the use of the FEMA grants, judging by the numbers that I was looking at. And if this can then be applied to trees, which is unclear to me at the moment, but if it could be because they are also dead and noxious, then great, and I agree with Sabrina's approach.
So, I have a question about the nuisance laws that we have. So, in this circumstance, if I have my property and I'm recalcitrant and I'm just not doing what I'm supposed to do, at some point, heading into fire season, the city will show up and abate my property and slap a lien on my home, right? That's within the enforcement code.
Correct, after warnings, citations.
Yeah, as you go through, yeah, I've just been very difficult for you all to work with, and here we are. And at some point, you're going to enter onto my property and abate that issue. When we're talking about a nuisance, is there anything in that space? Because what I'm thinking is that, again, if I have a dead tree, a big dead tree that I can't afford to take out, maybe what I actually want is for you to, is for the city to deal with it and put a lien on my house, right? And if, does that work in nuisance space, do we have the ability to essentially do that type of action, or do we have to keep it in a different place?
So, 9.08.120, letter B says, "No owner or person in charge of a property shall allow to stand a dead or decaying tree that is a hazard to the public or to persons or a property on or near the property." So, that's already in our code. So, I think in terms of a nuisance, it would be just like the abatement process, right? You know, we would cite, notice, cite, et cetera, and then go in and clean up the property or go in and take out the dead trees, which we have done on certain properties that have been nuisance. So, we do have that process in place. Now, typically, you know, it needs to be very, we're very cautious about people's property rights when we do it. There is a very long process to get there. There is a hearing element, right, that is going to the municipal judge now, and so I think all of that is in place. But I think, you know, typically, if there's one dead tree, you know, then, you know, what is the expectation, I think, for staff capacity to be able to address all this? Because we are, it is many, many years for very severe nuisance properties to get that through, right? And so, there is just an element of this is very difficult because of personal property rights.
Yeah. So, it sounded like what we had here was to change to the 15th, carry on with the language that has been brought forward this evening, and then take up a deeper vegetation conversation as part of the CWPP process that's coming towards us. Is that what we're understanding? Okay, is there anything else? Anything else, any other questions or thoughts? Counselor Dale?
One little one question. Sidney, I just want to hear from you, because I know you're awesome and amazing and all over this, but I know that within AMC 9 and nuisance, some of it falls under the city that's not necessarily in fiber purview and some is. I assume you are, at a staff level, all in, you guys are talking to each other, making sure where this falls, so I just want to make sure that nothing falls through the cracks as far as AMC 9, as far as you're concerned. You've got it? Thumbs up, perfect, thanks, Sidney. I appreciate it, really.
All right, great. Well, this has been a fantastic conversation on a variety of fire-related issues, perfectly timed as we get closer to the fire season this year. Thank you both for your great work and for the presentation and for answering our many varied questions that we had this evening so well. We look forward to the next conversation about this ordinance and about the vegetation and for the format, and then I will just, I will third that, that thank you, thank you so much for that format.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.